That we would vote on after.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Any opposition to that?
No, I'll second it.
All right, so I'll move approval of the agenda with that change seconded by the treasurer. Any other discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've got an agenda. Any disclosures of conflict of interest tonight? Anybody got big money in the fire truck industry?
Wish it is.
It's a shame, right? These prices make me want to have. All right, we'll open it up for public statement. One, this is designated for statements concerning just current agenda items. There will be a second place on the agenda where anybody can speak their mind to any topic they'd like for three minutes. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak? No, no one's going to speak. Okay, let's move into new business. Number six, six A, there is no items for introduction discussion. That brings us to the first item for action, which we have now made the fire truck purchase proposals. Superintendent, how do you want us to handle this conversation? Do you have a preamble for us, or do you want to invite your staff up?
I don't at this time. I would invite Chief up if he would like to speak. And then most of the research that's in your packet was conducted by Treasurer Wilson. So I would defer at any conversations or questions to her about the proposals that are in your packet.
And then I just handed you two more that were emailed just late this afternoon.
From the same company?
Yes, they updated, they changed their rates and they put the down payment that we possibly have that they budgeted for 2024. They didn't do that in their first proposals.
Did they decrease the rate?
Yes, it was at 6.1.
So maybe they saw the board packet and decided a more competitive offer would be interesting?
Yep. Back there on that corner.
Happy to take that.
Any questions for Dave? He's up there.
Yeah, I mean, you have any question, that's why I'm here, but you guys are doing the finance stuff and that's...
Dave, I got a question.
Yeah.
Is there a possibility that these trucks could last two years without a lot of problems?
I would hope so.
I'm just wondering if it's gonna take two years to get them.
Correct.
And if we hold off on getting one or both of them, are we putting our township in jeopardy at all?
At the current time, nothing is pressing on the two that we've got that is putting our township in jeopardy now.
Other questions?
That doesn't, I mean, it's kind of like your car, you know? It works today and doesn't work tomorrow. I don't, you know, but I don't have anything that I foresee. You don't want to talk to me about that at all. But I don't have anything that is outstanding right now that says we gotta do this now, you know? We're okay. Yeah.
If we went ahead, I noticed some of these proposals were for just one. If we went ahead and replaced one now and then maybe set up a situation where we were trying to stagger them a little bit, so you're always paying for a fire truck, but you're not paying for two at once type situation. So maybe pushing the second one off.
Five to 10 years.
Is that feasible with the current vehicles that we have? The newer of the two, I guess?
It's feasible.
Feasible?
Okay.
I mean, it might not be ideal.
Yeah, exactly, but it's, there's a thing with firefighters, we adapt and overcome with whatever we gotta do. So, yes, it's feasible. You know, the only reason that we started with the two, and like I said, was not trying to cram it down your throat is because they're so close and because of the extended time of getting them. So that's why we went the way we did.
That's a good question, Kate. I had that same thought about how we can like break up the rotation.
And make it a little more progressive in our thinking of how we're gonna replace them in the future. So it isn't a last minute, let's do this type situation.
Right, that's how come I asked for a proposal for one and then two. Because I figure if we can do one, then in five years we can do with the second one. Because we need to save, they have, they need to put it in the CIP and they need to budget for it every year. So we can start saving the money. So.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. If, I hear a lot of questions at the DAS about one. Which one would you replace and which one would you prefer to purchase? The 1,000 gallon or the 2,000 gallon?
It would be the 2,000 gallon, because that's the one that would replace the oldest truck that we've got.
And the oldest truck?
Yep.
And that's the goal, to get more water on that truck.
And that's what I told them, so that's what that is.
That makes sense, thank you.
Do you feel like there's been an increase in calls the last few years? I don't know if the township's been growing more, if that's something that might continue, or...
Oh yeah, there's an increase in calls. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but I had them all for police and fire board. And we're down for the year, at the current time of last police and fire board, we were down like 60 or 70 for the year.
Last year we had 1350, the only other day was 1287. We, over the last seven years, we've had a 10 to 15% increase every year, if not more. Obviously, 2020 was lower because of COVID, but 2021 and 2022 was an exponential increase.
Right, and with those numbers being down, we can actually account for several calls that we had for frequent calls to the same address that are no longer there. So we're down, we can go down like 300 calls for those frequent calls. So we're really not down overall. We are down overall, don't get me, you know, in the big picture, the actual bottom line, but...
Chief, are most of...
And we're actually up on fire calls this year more than...
That's what I was gonna ask you. Is most of the calls using the other ambulance-like truck? I'm not good with the names of the...
Yes, they are for the medicals, yes. That's our first run out for that. But our fire calls numbers are actually up for the year.
Okay.
Calls for service.
I know you've given us these numbers before and I also don't have them in front of me, I'm sorry. But what's the like mix? Is it 50/50 with the medical calls versus actual fire, 60/40?
It's probably closer to 60/40.
With 60 being medical?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
And the pumper truck would not go on those calls?
No.
No?
Okay.
We, some, some fire departments run that way. They run a fire truck on everything and we try not to do that, basically, because we don't need that there. We've got enough other things that we can use than, so we're not running that truck every day. And that's how we get them the last 20 years, too, so.
Yeah.
How close are we to needing another ambulance truck?
That, I don't think, I think that could be definitely put off for another, granted, we never know with the truck, but I would say another good three to five years, easy.
Three, five years.
Yeah.
I wonder if this might be a good topic for the newly created finance committee to look at. That would require us to put off the decision, so we'd have to actively decide that. But it does seem like there's a lot of financial decision-making here that, you know, I'd like to dig into this a little bit more. I feel like 75% on the finance stuff. We could use some expertise, I would imagine, and Treasurer, feel free to disagree with me if you do. But to have them tackle this issue and perhaps add the ambulance truck in there in the long-term planning, because if we're gonna push one truck out a little bit, we're gonna end up running up against this third truck now needing a replacement and really build a more comprehensive schedule. I don't know if folks are comfortable with putting it off a bit. It feels like, as the chief said, there doesn't seem to be urgency to do it now, but urgency to plan for it now. That, that would be something that I would propose.
Mr. Supervisor, when you say something I propose, are you putting that in form of a motion or just propose for a motion?
No, I'm putting it out there to see the response it gets and then maybe a motion. Because if you all hate it, I'm not gonna put that in a motion.
That's fine.
Workshopping the idea is how I describe it.
Very good. I have similar thoughts, just because everybody recognizes the need on this board, I believe. The chief is, when he spoke last and a little bit today, did speak about some other trucks needing being replaced. And I think it's good that, you know, you're looking to what's coming next. I also remember that you have to discuss the finance committee and you and the treasurer are going to be working to stand that up. I think this is something that fits perfectly in that. It'd give an opportunity to look not just at this particular thing, but the other ones that are gonna come after and maybe put it into one big package that they're able to look at and bring all together. So I personally would, would make the motion that maybe we could postpone. I really don't want to table this, but I'd like to postpone it until the finance committee does get up and running, if that's agreeable to anybody else here.
Could you formally refer it to the finance committee? Does that feel more action-oriented?
That feels a lot more action-oriented.
It puts some pressure on our friend to my right and your left to get the finance committee, so it doesn't take very long.
Yeah, I don't know if, yeah, I certainly would include that or change the motion to include that. I don't know if we want to try and establish a date or we want to be indefinite on that, because I, we still have to stand up the committee and also look at their ability to have the time necessary to go through this again. I'm thankful to the treasurer that she did try and put together these last-minute proposals, but even then you can see what they give you one day, they change the next. So it's very complex. And so, yes, I'll make the motion as you have adjusted it.
I have a question. Comment. So I, I'm neutral on the finance committee. And I say that with respect to, it's your decision whether it goes to the finance committee or not. What I am indicating to you is that that would allow me a little bit more time to try to understand. I had a conversation with trustee Rosecrantz today about when some of the money might have been restricted or committed to the fund, the fire truck vehicle replacement fund. And I, it's clear to me I wasn't looking back far enough. So he gave me a news jumping off point, so I think I would have some time to try to find that information as well.
We were able to find 200, is that right?
Correct, but I have a feeling there's more based on the conversation that I had today.
Yeah, because the 200 was in 2018, Jack, it was when you were...
Correct. I was looking kind of at a period when, when former superintendent Wachichu was here, kind of towards the end of his term here, when he turned out in 19 and left us for another community. I think perhaps I have to go back to even like 15, 16. It was when Treasurer Wisswasser was here with Superintendent Wachichu. And I, so I got that information today. So I think that would be very helpful and give me some time to track that down.
I think there might be some older than that.
Okay.
Because when I joined the board in 2012, I was told that there was money set aside for a fire engine.
Okay.
I don't know if we then subsequently spent that, or...
We may have, because I think we purchased the command vehicle and we might have purchased something else during that time as well. So it's possible that some of it was spent on...
Yeah.
Another vehicle.
Okay, that's helpful to know. Other thoughts?
I guess, should we put some sort of timeline or deadline on this process? Just thinking about, it takes 500 and some days from the time that you sign to commit to do this to actually getting the vehicle that, by the time it goes to committee and then some meetings and then it comes here and then we discuss it and then, you know, that's six months worth of meetings and whatnot. I don't know, should we just kind of put some sort of deadline or timeline on this to expedite it a little? Is it, I mean, is that necessary?
I mean, that feels reasonable. First of all, the fact that you have a TIA calculator in front of you is the most teacher thing I've ever seen.
I care, this is my...
And I love it so much, I'm so glad. So you've got the numbers in front of you. Treasurer, how, how long do you think, or how fast do you think we could get the finance committee up and running in this conversation?
Well, we had said that we were gonna do it in 2024 and you had put it on our last committees.
Yep.
So it's already been part of, established. So really it is choosing a date, which was always set on the supervisors choosing the date and time of one committee's meet.
Okay.
So.
Well, let's talk about that then and...
See how she did that?
Yeah. I'd like to defer to the treasurer.
I'm available most of the time. You're the one that has the schedule that has to work around.
Yeah, let's talk about that after the meeting then and let's get those running. But do you think like a three-month, a six-month?
Oh, three months, we should be able, I mean, I got things in a week.
In terms of having the conversation and feeling like we have a recommendation for the board?
Yes, because these, the gentleman from both of the companies that I talked to, finance companies, they are willing to zoom in or call and have a conference call with all of us at a finance committee meeting. So we can understand it all together, so we grasp it a little better.
Okay, do you think that three months is sufficient?
We should, I mean, we're already gonna have to have the 6% increase. And when I talked to the gentleman from Emergency Plus, because it says that the 6% increase will go up, you know, the first of the year. But he said within six months, that 6% could be even higher. So really we want to make a decision within the first six months of the year.
Right.
Because we can only count on the 6% being for the first six months of the year.
Right, and where did, I mean, do these interest rates follow like federal loan interest rates?
These are loan interest rates.
Could also fluctuate themselves.
Like the first ones they sent me didn't even have their interest rate on it. But when I called them and asked them, emailed them, they said it was 6.1. Well, today they came back with 5.5.
Right.
Because I believe they looked at the board packet and saw what the other company was offering us.
Right.
So.
In three months, it could be 2.5.
They could go down, you just don't know.
Right, right.
So then that will offset the 6% that it's gonna cost to build the thing, you know?
Right. Could we, I don't know, what do other municipalities do for replacing these? It seems like we should get into a regular schedule of vehicle replacement.
It seems like maybe we need an inventory of all of these things and sort of, and maybe the superintendent has that. I don't mean to assume she doesn't, but, you know, we've got what, six police cruisers?
That's all in the CIP program.
Yeah, but like the, the big tractors we buy and stuff that...
That's all in the CIP program.
Is it?
Mm-hmm.
But not in the CIP program that goes to the planning commission?
They don't score it.
They don't score it, but it's in there.
Because we look at it nondiscretionary versus discretionary.
Yeah, I don't think we saw the nondiscretionary as the planning commission.
Oh, it's interesting, because I had it done for your meeting, so.
I thought it was in there.
I would have thought you would have, but possibly not.
I mean, we saw the CIP, but in terms of like before the CIP was finished, I don't think we saw all of that.
Okay.
But I could be wrong. John's saying no? Good, I'm glad that I'm not crazy.
So I must have just saw it in the packet that was given to us as a board member?
Yeah, yeah, it's in the final CIP. Let me be clear, it's in the CIP.
I was like, I know I saw it.
But in terms of when we were debating the projects that are on the discretionary side, we didn't know what was on the, and it doesn't matter. I'm just saying, it wasn't in the context.
Yep.
But it does seem like that could all be brought together into one. So that maybe annually there's one thing we're buying and that we planned for it. You know, that would be the dream scenario, it probably won't be that great, but Al?
I'd like to see at least one of the, either the fire chief or his assistant at them meetings. If there's any questions, they can answer them and they, they know more about the trucks than probably the committee will.
That's for sure.
Oh, at the finance ones where we discuss them? Is that what you're talking about? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that feels reasonable.
Yep.
Well, we have a motion in a second. Is there more discussion? Is anyone feeling real uncomfortable with this?
Can we repeat the motion, just so I have it right? Did you add it to it?
The motion, as I understand it, and trustee Phillips can correct me, is that the motion is to refer this issue to the finance committee for a recommendation back to the board. And then we could add the three months to it, or we could just say it'll be three months, whatever you all are...
I'd like to amend it to include that within 90 days that it comes back from the finance committee to the board.
Okay, and Al, you're okay with that?
There'd be fire department personnel on the committee to answer any questions.
Let's say at the meeting, not on the committee.
At the committee.
Yeah.
At the meeting.
Because the committee will be doing other things besides us.
The next time you'll have to, you'll have fire trucks and so you'll have to have the fire department there or the police department there to take care of it, so.
You got that? It's like a finely woven quilt between all of us. I did talk to trustee Kellerman today. She had some of the similar questions about urgency. She also felt that as a growing community, we wanted to make sure we take care of the fire department and that we never had any, you know, destruction or anything that could have been prevented because we didn't make a decision fast enough. I did not ask her about referring it to the finance committee, so I can't say how she'd think about that. But I did promise her when I spoke to her today that I would share that thought with all of you. All right, so motion in a second, any other conversation? All right, let's do a voice vote on this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the motion carries. Any last comments about the fire truck proposals before we move on to the next topic? Thank you to the department staff who have been with us and providing us the information, it's very helpful. That brings us to the fourth quarter 2023 budget amendments, and in capital letters, final.
It's a final, this is it.
This is it.
This is it.
We've only got what, three days or some, four days?
Correct. So there was, I discovered when we were going through the last budget amendments approved by this body, that there was another payroll in this year, although it officially gets paid out on the 4th or 5th of January. All the money is recorded back to this calendar year for, because it's our fiscal year and it was spent in 2023. So what I discovered in my department solely is that the staff salaries, we needed more money for that. My budget, because I don't have a lot of other line items, is pretty tight, whereas other departments have some cushion and have some overage that can help absorb some of those costs. So for my department, the superintendent's department, I have two staff salaries that are comprised in that, 101, 172, 704. And then, of course, as you know, the benefits can continue to come in through March of 2024. The next three are kind of ceremonial. They, they don't require your approval, but I wanted to be transparent and let you know that they would be using money from their fund balance. Building and zoning fund will be using up to $66,000 of their fund balance. Drug forfeiture, possibly up to 1,000, even though it's only at 199.24 right now. And then streetlights will be using part of their fund balance at almost $6,000.
So that last sign is not what has already been transferred?
Correct, it has not, none of the, none of the funds have had their monies transferred yet.
I think we gotta use a different term than year-to-date then.
Okay.
Because year-to-date would mean that is what's happened until now.
Okay.
So what you're actually saying is new.
What I'm trying to indicate is this is what we need to make it whole, so, okay.
That's helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have an idea then of what the final fund balance usage would be for '23?
From the general fund? As of the last round of budget amendments that you approved, I think it was 94,000.
No, it's gotta be way more than that.
Okay.
It's gonna be like over a million dollars.
Okay, I don't have that number with me then at this time. All I recall is the, what we used last time.
Okay, thanks. And you're looking for action on that first part today?
I am, thank you.
What do folks think?
I'll make a motion to accept the fourth quarter final budget amendments for 2023.
Any more discussion on the items being altered? All right, we'll do a roll call vote.
Trustee Hagerman?
Yes.
Trustee Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Treasurer Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
That motion passes. Anything else on budgeting you wanna tell us, Superintendent?
We will continue to work with our accounting firm. We will have to have a single audit for the ARPA funds, because we have made some adjustments and that's something that can be discussed in the finance committee and then shared out with the board. I want to make sure everybody understands that. This was on the recommendation of Rod Taylor, who is with Mayor Kosterison, on how we could use our ARPA funds and, and basically be done with the money, but then be able to use the money as we've decided. It's basically using it as, to cover a loss. But we're gonna do that through payroll and then we'll be able to fund all the projects. It was a good recommendation from him and it got it taken care of, so it appears as though we have used all of our ARPA funds, but still have the leeway to use it for the, for the projects that we had identified during the budget process. Basically, it just frees us up to no longer have to continue reporting and it, it basically just means that we can be, we can use the money almost like it's our fund balance and no longer ARPA funds.
Because it's been appropriated.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And then we're still at the cap of 2026 to spend all those down?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That's great. And then the single audit was part of the proposal we got from the audit firm, right?
It was not, they are actually getting me a new engagement letter. Because when I notified him...
I don't think it was.
When I notified him of the fact that we were doing what we were doing, he said he would send me a new engagement letter, including that single audit.
I thought they gave us pricing that did include a single audit.
They may have before, but when he sent me the engagement letter, it was only for...
Oh, I see, from proposal to engagement letter?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yep, so he'll be giving me another, providing me with another engagement letter.
So did we budget for the single audit, or will that be an edit in 2024?
I think we've budgeted enough, based on their new, their price increase. But if it...
Six or $8,000 or something?
Yes, it's, 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 it feels very minor for an audit. So I think there will be enough funds there, but if not, I will be transparent and bring that back to this board.
And then will we need to do a single audit in the future, or does the single audit cover the appropriation?
No, this will, this, this, the single audit will cover the entire appropriation and we will no longer to, need to account for it in the future.
Great.
It really does free us up. It's, it's more like we've, we, it, it, it's, it's like saying we've spent the money to cover payroll, but now it's, this is now fund balance money, so.
Oh, I see.
I'm having trouble following that.
That's okay.
I think I got it.
Because payroll is an allowable expense.
Correct.
Got it. All right, any other questions on budgeting stuff for folks?
If it isn't a budgetable thing, then how can we do it?
It is.
Oh, I thought he said it...
No, no, payroll is.
It is.
It is.
It is.
Okay. I just misunderstood what you were saying.
Sorry, I think it's a complex mechanism we're doing here.
It is, it is very complex.
So was it payroll for all 2023, or did it go beyond that?
No, 2023.
And that was enough to use it all?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Go ahead.
In the single audit that is just covering the ARPA stuff?
ARPA funds.
Yes, okay.
We'll have our regular audit.
So it'll be reported separately and all, okay.
Yes, and accounted for separately.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on budgeting, budget changes? All right, you ready to move on, Superintendent? Great, let's move to public statement two. Again, limited to three minutes where anyone can talk to us about anything.
I appreciate your discussion about the CIP process, because it's been an ongoing discussion for probably at least a decade in the planning commission. And we were told that certain items were nondiscretionary, like replacing police cars and tractors and those kinds of things. CIP projects were things that were optional, that people would like to have, that were discretionary in purchasing, like you'd maybe like to have a new deck out in the backyard, but you really don't want to spend the money right now. So we were told that we didn't have a privy to set aside money in the CIP for things like fire trucks or tractors or those kind of things, because that was part of the budgeting process. So if you're gonna change the game, we'd really like to know what the new rules are. Thank you very much. So if you're going to change the game, we'd really like to know what the new rules are. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. That really brings us to the end of our public presence. So I imagine there's no other folks that want to say anything for public statements. All right. Board member comments? Kate, do you want to get us started?
I'd like to wish everybody happy new year. I don't have much else to comment.
Al?
No, I have nothing.
I'll also say happy new year. I know this isn't Thanksgiving, but I'll say that I'm thankful going into the new year with this board. I think we're working together really well and being efficient and making good decisions for the township. So I'm excited about what this next year will bring for us. General?
No, no comments. Good meeting.
Jeff?
Nothing.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Should I give my last one? I'm sorry.
So when we, Matt Le, Mayor Kosterison, Matt Taylor.